Hi, everybody. Thanks for being here tonight. I'd like to start the meeting with a roll call to establish a forum. John?
Here.
Nicole?
Here.
Here.
Corby?
Here.
Joe?
Here.
And here's where we have the forum. Nicole, has the meeting been properly noticed?
Yes.
And John, would you read our equity admission statements?
I will. Our equity statement is each student has access to the resources and educational rigor they need at the right moment in their education, regardless of race, gender, gender identity, ethnicity, ability, language, orientation, religion, family background, or family income. And our R1 results policy, our mission statement is each student will acquire the knowledge and skills necessary to achieve their personal goals, thrive in a diverse global society, and lead a healthy, self-fulfilling life.
Thank you. Has everyone had a chance to take a look at the agenda for tonight before? I'd like to see if we could make a motion to move public comment up to right before the superintendent's report. Is anyone willing to make a motion to do that?
So who?
Do you have a second?
Second.
Second, so first motion from Jen, a second from Corby. All in favor, signify with a "hi."
Aye.
The meeting, the agenda with the modification has been adopted. Okay, so with that, we do have one public comment from Leslie Steffen. Would you like to come on up or where do we want to be? I have microphones.
All right. Hello, all. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Leslie Steffen. I'm a Pittsburgh resident, a taxpayer, a Verona parent, and may I add, one that supports all the referendums. And tonight, I'm coming here as a hockey mom. I have three kids in the district. My boys are in sixth and seventh grade at Savannah Oaks, and my daughter is in third grade at Stoner Frey. My boys have been skating and playing hockey since they were three and four years old. Currently, because of the lack of ice times, they have practice until sometimes 9:30 at night on a school night, could be two times a week. This schedule on a regular basis gets exhausting with the 7:30 a.m. bus pickup in our school schedule. I'm not just speaking for myself, I'm representing nearly two other families in the district that play hockey. The club has grown dramatically over the past, over the years. Seventy-eight percent of the youth hockey in Verona are VASD students and families. The second sheet of ice will give more ice time for all user groups and help alleviate all goalie ice times for most of them. The expansion of the girls' program is growing exponentially within our community. Right now, limited times are available for figure skating, public skate, and a learn-to-ski program. Quick background, Ice Inc., a non-for-profit board, has been working on this camp, working on this for over three years. The capital campaign committee, which is called Ice for Kids of All Ages, started a little bit over a year ago. I have been on the campaign committee since the very beginning. We have raised over $5.6 million out of our $8 million goal. We broke ground, and we are moving ahead. So therefore, we need to close that gap in the upcoming months. Of that three point, of that money that's been raised, 3.5 million is private donors. Ice Inc. Incorporated and Verona Youth Hockey. Edgewood High School has raised over a million, as a second sheet of ice will be their high school home. $750,000 from the city and Chamber of Commerce has been, as well, included in that as well. Many local families, businesses, and corporations have also donated. Over the past several months, Joel Marshall and I have been meeting with Dr. Clarity and Chad and have kept them informed of our fundraising progress. Youth hockey is our bigger user, biggest user group. However, Verona Area School District returned for two weeks rents the area for gym class and field trips throughout the school year. The district's high school hockey program, J.B. University, is one of the most successful programs in the state for over the last 15 years. They have earned 13 conference titles, eight appearances, eight state appearances, and two state championships. Because their sport is played off-campus, they received zero facility improvements with the new high school, unlike most every other sport in the Verona Area School District. I'm asking the board's support in funding the ring expansion. Kids in the Verona Area School District will continue to utilize the ring on a regular basis for many more years to come. Thank you for your time.
Thanks so much for coming and taking tonight. I know this is for the board, this will tie into something that'll come up in the superintendent's reports, we'll hear more information about that.
Thank you.
So with that, I will turn it over to Dr. Clarity for the superintendent's report.
All right. First, good evening, everybody. Thank you for the public comment, thank you for everyone being here and those that are watching virtually. Firstly, want to thank our Board of Education for a phenomenal retreat on Saturday, opportunity to learn and go together, thank you for dedicating your time above and beyond what you already have the commitments of work-life balance and your commitment to our community. But it was great to come together and share in common learning, share in common goals under the mission of our district, and thank you again. I want to open up by, this is our first meeting since the opening of Black History Month, and so I wanted to formally acknowledge Verona Area School District's full support of Black History Month and remind everyone that Black History is American history and how important it is for us to know and recognize that. Also, our continued commitment to ensure that Black History and among other histories that we celebrate will not just be confined to one month, but a part of our culture, our curriculum, and our instructions. So I just want to put that in a public space and thank you to the board for acknowledging that and supporting that through your working policy and the equity statement. Next, I wanted to take an opportunity to acknowledge some phenomenal scholars that have received awards in the Verona Area School District. First are the 2023 Martin Luther King Outstanding Young Persons Awards. And you have them in front of you and on the screen, screen behind me. So representing, you see the name representing for Verona Area High School. Let's take a minute for you to see those. And then on the next slide are the represent, are the Young Person Awards for Badger Ridge Middle School, Coronales Charter School, and Savannah Oaks Middle School. So I want to quickly give you a summary of what these awards mean and their, and their history. Each year for the last 39 years in county, the Urban League of Greater Madison has partnered with Dane County Middle and High Schools to recognize students for their achievements in and out of the classroom. In the spirit of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., the MLK Outstanding Young Person Awards are given to students selected by their individual schools based on academic performance, community service, leadership qualities, and extracurricular involvement. This year, a total of 24 Verona Area School District students received Outstanding Young Person Awards, and we want to congratulate all of our awardees. Additionally, as we continue to celebrate the scholarly work of our, of our students, we had two Verona Area School District students that received two separate scholarships. The first is the Betty Franklin Hammond Scholarship, and that was given to Andrea Chavez-Lazaro. It is a quick summary. The Betty Franklin Hammond Scholarship Fund was created to honor one of Madison's most dynamic and visionary leaders, Ms. Betty Franklin Hammond. With her passing in April 1999, this scholarship was started through a generous endowment from the Madison Community Foundation, with subsequent gifts added by friends, family, and people in the community. The Betty Franklin Hammond Scholarship rewards the accomplishments of graduating seniors seeking to further their education beyond high school, with special attention given to those who have faced particular economic and/or social obstacles on their journey to educational advancement. Again, this year's awardee is Verona Area High School senior Andrea Chavez-Lazaro. So we want to celebrate her and her family and all the staff that have supported her journey at Verona Area High School. Finally, we also have another scholarship in front of the George Aglin, Aglin Memorial Scholarship. The George Aglin Memorial Scholarship is awarded to two graduating, graduating seniors who have overcome obstacles to achieving their goal of pursuing a post-secondary program focused on technology, music, art, or another steam field. The scholarship was created by Jim Gallegos to honor the life and legacy of his spouse, George Aglin, who passed away in 2020. This year's awardee is a Verona Area High School senior, Samuel Akier. So we wanted to thank, again, the high school staff for their nomination and support of Samuel. And again, it's just an honor to be able to serve and recognize the brilliant students that comprise the Verona Area School District. So thank you, board, for your continued support, and please join me celebrating our scholars. All right, with that, I am going to continue the superintendent's report with an update on the Verona Area, Verona Area Ice Donation, and that will be led by Mr. Chad Weasley.
Good evening, school board. Welcome to February. You guys already got your welcome at a retreat, but it's the first time I get to see you here. So we have a number of items on the finance and operations side to work through this evening. Got Pete Brinder here to help fill in the details on a few of the items that we'll vote for tonight. So I wanted to kind of just walk the board through what we're hoping to accomplish this evening. First, a brief presentation, and you already heard from Leslie regarding what will be a Board of Education approved donation, and we're going to fill in some details today and then make sure the board has all the questions they've answered, they need answered ahead of the vote. We've got a finance and operations update around a number of items, including our membership audit and just kind of a three-month look ahead on where we're going with this year's and next year's budget. And then starting to seed some conversations around debt management that will play into how we finish up this fiscal year and what we build into next year's budget, and then we'll go through OWE-7. So I'm going to start with the Verona Ice Donation, and I can certainly paraphrase what you heard from Leslie already. So we've been working, Dr. Clarity and I have probably had four or five meetings with Leslie and Coach and a few other folks representing this group around a project that is our just started. And inevitably, regardless of the board's decision tonight, our students and our community will benefit from the hard work of this group regarding the fundraising that they've already done. We had our superintendent edit groundbreaking just a couple of weeks ago, and I think that was Dr. Clarity's way of certainly signing off on the fact that this is an important project for our community. And we're here tonight with a recommendation to the board in terms of a donation to support this project. A few points that, again, you probably heard from Leslie, but I wanted to also reiterate that I wrote into the consent memo that I put in front of the board tonight. So our hockey team was really the only WIA sport that did not benefit from the building which we're sitting in tonight regarding upgrades in terms of athletic facilities. I, it's my understanding that there wasn't even a sheet of ice on an original master plan early on in the planning relative to this project. It is our home ice for our WIA hockey team and is utilized by classes throughout the year, and it's actually WIA hockey teams. Our girls' co-op also utilizes that after that ice on occasion. There will be new locker rooms constructed, and Leslie didn't necessarily get into this, but I think it's important that we know that we'll, we'll have our own Verona Wildcat locker rooms for our boys' hockey team, and then there will be a girls', all-gender essentially locker room for Title IX compliance and to support the expansion of girls' hockey in our community, which I know is important to many. I don't think we can downplay the preferable practice times piece and the fact that much in some regards like WIA swimming, we're really fortunate here that our swimmer's been hot in the pool at an ideal time after practice, and we have renters as close as Mont Coro that don't get that same luxury. That we have, that we have a swim team that goes in the natatorium, and they're in the water at 5:30, 6 o'clock in the morning because Mont Coro doesn't have water. And the same is true ice, that if we did not have that and had student athletes engaged in, in WIA hockey, if we did not have the Verona Ice Arena, that would be true for us as well, or we would be shopping ice all over the county and could have our own students, our own WIA students with very, very problematic practice times. So that's a big deal, and loosely aligned results policies, quite frankly. The project was supported by the City of Verona and also our two-year commission. A little bit on the accounting side, and this is related to our budget update a little bit later. We do have, we have flexibility built into the, how we finish up this year's budget, and that's related to debt management. And we're going to talk tonight, at the end of this fiscal year, we'll have the possibility of a big fund balance deposit, we'll have the possibility of some Fund 39 prepayment, of the possibility of Fund 38 prepayment. And I already talked to the board the last time I was here regarding our project at Savannah Oaks. If we want to dip into next year's budget in a strategic way, if we want to dive into fund balance a little bit, or we want to do some of the money set aside for debt prepayment. So we are tonight recommending that we squirrel away $250,000 of this year's budget that would have gone towards debt management to make this one-time donation. So this is not a recurring expense. We, in meeting with the fundraising group, we went down that road of a five- or 10-year commitment and splitting this up over a number of years, and actually just made the decision that number one, the project needs the money immediately, they're already out of the ground, and two, we didn't really want the kind of recurring payment hanging over the district for a five- or 10-year period of time. So that's what we're recommending in terms of the finances behind the potential donation. Questions on the consent agenda? So I'm certainly having to answer questions right now. Kind of per our last question on the projects we've got going out in Pittsburgh, and I think this was to Joe's point, we can have discussion now, that the board can also pull this off consent and have further discussion ahead of the vote, but I'm happy to answer questions right now. Yeah?
So this movement would be to move a quarter of a million, but the gap is bigger than that between the 5.6 and the 8. So what happens? Is, is there a planned intention to continue to fundraise through these additional sources? What happens if that gap isn't made up?
Yeah, so that we, in being a donor, and I, you know, I asked this question of our legal team as well, we're making a donation. The project is coming out of the ground. We are making a good faith donation that this project is going to get finished. Similar to what the city did, times four, that this is our, our, this is our donation to help the project get to completion. We, we don't feel like we're in a position to, to put a legal contract in place that if the project runs awry and they're already out of the ground, that we'd be chasing money through some type of litigation. So this is a good faith donation that this project's going to be completed, and that's how they've accepted all of their funds.
Can you remind me, what was the budget total debt transfer amount that we talked about?
Yeah, so we're at about $12.4 million set aside for next year. So this is a very small portion of, a subset for this year, a very small portion of that.
Does this, does a donation get factored into our shared cost formula for today?
Any, any spent money? Yep.
Can you say the last part of that question?
Joe asked if it would have an impact in terms of factoring into our A calculation, and the answer to that is yes. So the state calculates a per-people cost, and this would be, but paying off this building does as well.
Sure.
Yeah. Any other questions?
There are questions. You're talking a little bit, and I love all the points you covered, and I'm happy to see this. Frankly, I wish we were in a position to do more. You're talking a lot about girls' hockey and having a girl at hockey right now until 9:30 tonight, you know, a lot of empathy for this. Should she continue on in high school? Right now, she would have to go to MIA if it's not on fire to have practice at like 5:00 in the morning to participate in a co-op there. So when I see this about, you know, the girls' locker room, I want to understand if we're looking at not just this donation, but partnering further to expand access for our students who are playing girls' hockey at the high school level right now, that do have to make that trip and do not get favored boys' times. So I don't know how much of this is a question or just maybe just a question about like, do you see us continuing to be committed to this as a partnership going forward to build that girls' hockey program? Obviously, I'm a horse in the race.
Yeah, I, I certainly don't, I, I can't speak for the Verona Ice Arena. I can tell you that kind of through Joel, our athletic director, that we are fully committed to continuing to foster the expansion and participation of girls' hockey here in our school district. I can also tell you that at least superficially, a second sheet of ice in, in Verona will only help the possibility of us potentially down the road even hosting our own girls' hockey team that wouldn't even necessitate a co-op. So, and those are the types of conversations we've had with the folks from the Verona Ice Arena, that is there a time that, that we can actually put our own girls' hockey team on the ice and that would not require a co-op? It may not be in the next three to five years, but I think down the road, with how that sport is growing, it's possible. And I think the fact that we'd have two sheets of ice in this, in the city would, would make it much more feasible than it would be in the city.
As not having a hockey player myself, is that just based on number of players? When you say three to five years or further, are you basically saying with growth and interest among our district students, that if there were enough girls from Verona that wanted to play?
For sure. I don't know the exact, Coach might be able to get, get us a cutoff. So I know, as an example, Easton LaFollette do a co-op boys' RC hockey team because their numbers at both places got down to the point that they couldn't competitively put a team on the ice with the numbers they had at those individual sites. So that the life progression of co-ops sometimes can be, and I think it's the case with girls' hockey, sometimes you can have a co-op with four or five teams, four or five cities that feed into an individual co-op, it gets big enough and they can break into two co-ops, and eventually, A, we've got 19 girls that are grades nine to 12, let's break off and have our own varsity team. So I think that would be the eventual goal, all the folks involved in supporting girls' hockey.
And can you remind us how this donation compares to the city? Did you say four times?
Yeah, I believe the city was in for a million dollars.
And you said this is a one-time commitment? There's not consideration of the district?
It's a one-time commitment.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, again, you can pull it out of consent and yank me back up here if you guys have any other questions, but I'm available for me. All right. A, a finance and operations update. Relatively succinct in terms of our topics tonight. We're going to do a little, a little budget update, and related to that timeline will be our January membership audit and a little preview of debt management. So on the budget update side, we're going to do the second Friday count, take a look at our calendar ahead, and then look at that budget, budget debt management piece. Primarily Pete and Craig from our Power School Manager have spent a whole bunch of time early in the month of January re-upping our numbers. And as a reminder to the board, we have a third Friday count as we get the school year started in September, and that's a big one, that's the reason we can't finalize the budget until October. And then we have a second Friday count to essentially refresh the numbers that Pete has to send into DPI. The second Friday count does not have an impact on this year's essentially revenue limit related to enrollment, but it does have an impact related to the A, the equalization aid that happens next year and the formula that happens. I wanted to give the board an update, and I think this is connected to the discussion we had regarding open enrollment here a couple of board meetings ago. So our second Friday count has been completed. The, our Pete and I and our enrollment team inherited a DPI auditing our enrollment process here two years ago. Happy to say that Pete just got news just last week that we would not be audited next year because of their tight processes, which was very good news for Pete in particular. So kudos to him. I want to give the board an update that we have 47 more students in the district than we did from third Friday, 47 extra students than we did from third Friday, and that those 47 students, if they're still around for third Friday, the following year will have an impact on what would happen with our, our overall revenue authority, but likely will have an impact on what happens with the equalization game. So Pete calculated that the estimated increase for 23, 24 budget year is $500,000 of additional aid money. This does not mean more funding, this just means the state is funding more of our school district and the taxpayer's funding laws. So overall, good news. Any questions related to second Friday count?
Can you just clarify the, the line items here? So non-residents in, that means we are down one person who doesn't live in our district from our schools, correct? And what is the resident? I'm trying to do the math.
That is the open enrollment in, so it's all the kids living on Orville Middleton that are being educated here.
Right.
That is our, our non-residents in.
Gotcha.
The math on this is head count minus the open enrollment in, minus that part-time homeschool number, and plus our residents out would get us to the membership count.
So we had, we had more people move into our school district?
No. So Steve, I can rephrase that. I mean, so third Friday count, third Friday in September, we had 272 students enrolled in our school district that didn't live within the school district boundaries, and they were here via the open enrollment process, right? Yes. All that second Friday count means is we are down one of those students, meaning they likely moved out of the district.
So I guess I'm asking, where did the additional 47 come from? Are those people who just actually moved into our district? Okay, I just wanted to confirm. Sorry.
Yeah, so in, in general, they're under a, a new roof that they weren't under during second Friday count, they moved into the, our district. Yep.
At the last meeting we had, we talked a bit about our kind of net open enrollment in versus net open enrollment out. We can get that from this chart now because, right, this shows that we're, we get 271 in from, that don't live in the district, and there's only 163 students that live in the district that choose to go to school.
That's exactly right. Yeah, and I, and I, I'll just ask Dr. Clarity if this is okay. I actually thought this was a very pertinent follow-up to our open enrollment discussion. Quite frankly, next year, when we go through the open enrollment process, this is, these are numbers that the board should see that are, that feed into the one-year decision that all of you had to make around new slots. But yeah, as you can see here, we're, we're kind of, we're picking up over 100 students related to who's in and who's out, and you can see we're educating 271 students that don't live within our district boundaries. Any other questions on the second Friday count? I just thought the board would be interested in us picking up a decent number of kids from up here.
So I just wanted to reiterate, just from perspective of having worked in multiple districts, 47 students after the third Friday count face up construction as a significant number. So you know, just kind of reflect on our meeting two weeks ago, some of those very tough decisions that we could do, but also our rate of not just rooftops, we're rooftops with students that are now, now in our district and from the very likelihood of having those type of numbers continue for, for the proceeding that 47 after the third Friday count is to do.
Is that going to change kind of our budget assumptions that we use going forward?
I would say it, it will change the number that we'll continue to hone in on, on our best guess from what we'll see in third Friday count. That will, that will definitely form.
So when you say that will change that number, I'm wondering how much that 47 is in or out of alignment with what I remember when we went through some of the stuff around the referendum, we had a consulting firm that projected out the number of students based on growth and development and things like that. Is this in line with those projections, or is this greater than that?
This is, this bump in 47 is significant. Yeah. So related to OWE-12, and then certainly related to our annual budget process, we're actually going to have Mark Roffers re-up those numbers again, see what's going on with new rooftops, see where all these new students came from, we check birth rates and hone in on that, hone in on that number. We, we do have to continue to just keep an eye on it. We're, we're a quickly growing district, this is not an exact science, and especially when you, we are, we have new multifamily houses, which is great, and housing complexes going up in this community, and you don't necessarily know what's going to land in a two- or three-bedroom apartment. It could be, you know, it could be a couple with no students taking the easy commute to Epic, it could be something moving a family into our district, and that's really hard to make a perfect guess on.
I'm quite sure if you have camera I'm quite sure, if you have cameras in our office, you'll see this, like, number of times that left my office, tracked over to Chad's office, Chad, another house just went up. And this is when they were like, are we sure? Or, you know, and so it's not about the numbers, but it be, you can anticipate a growth rate with the number of rooftops that are on our, our area and thrown in a fish burger, even in my own neighborhood. And it's, I think I was one of six on the block and it's full all the way down, down the street now. So it's, it's great to be in a situation where we are a highly desirable area, highly desirable district, and we just need to really keep an eye on our, our rapid rate of expansion. Because it's, it's, we want to make sure we have a, a great education for every student that, you know, sets up Jeff and our, and our rooftops.
And when you're saying you're gonna have rockers, I, I assume that there would also be information about what grade levels? Because right now, we don't, we just see forty-seven, we don't really see what grade man flows are at. But I know when Rockers does announce, there's, there's more detail around what the predicted numbers are anticipated.
Yeah, we will actually be using this data in the short term to do our best at making sure we have the right teacher allocation set aside for the margin posting. So another dataset that Pete and Craig are working on behind the scenes will be projections right down to the grade level at each school. And there are some really important projections that if we're trying to run second grade classrooms at somewhere around twenty-one, twenty-two students, and we've got a bubble number, fifty, and we're projecting that it could be forty-two, or it could be fifty-five, that's a teacher somewhere in there. And it requires us to get exact to the school and to the grade number. It gets, it's difficult in this district because of three charters, it was a tweak, but we continue to refine those numbers basically on a daily basis to get as close as we can.
Are you finding any like alignments with like, like I know this past year Stoner had a drop in enrollment. Are we finding that, hey, a bunch of kids moved into the Stoner Elementary location? Or will we not know that for a moment?
Pete, well, he had that, had that at his fingertips.
And if not, it's okay, it's not.
Well, if I get a minute or two, I can see how it changed from September to January.
Not super important.
From a year ago, I just have to find the file there, so it'll take a moment.
And even in the Stoner case, that was great bad fluctuation more than it was total fluctuation.
Okay, okay.
There were significant shifts there.
You just had like a small incoming, whatever. Okay, gotcha, thank you. Pete, don't worry about finding that, that was enough of an answer for me.
All right.
Thank you.
We're good on that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right, and I did want to have us walk through what the next four, five months will look like in terms of our budget process. I, I think it's important, just as a blanket statement, for the board to remember we're between two-year budget cycles. So we could have incredibly exact discussions last year because we knew what was gonna happen with the, with the two-year state budget, and we had a very good idea of what enrollment was gonna look like. And that gave us very informed ways to ask the referendum question and gave the board very informed decisions to make regarding what was sitting in the state budget. That's not the case this year. And we have to be okay, our team and the board, with the unknown. The nice thing that we have going into next year's state budget is that we've passed a referendum and that we can make informed decisions in terms of what's best for staffing, we can make informed decisions on what's best for compensation, and then let all the cards kind of fall out here in the summer for us to make sure we, we have the full story when we get ourselves to the fall to finish up the budget. So I'm gonna try to paracrate my way through this. Today, we're gonna go get a budget update. I think the board saw CPI was released for last year, and that was a hair over eight, which means eight percent is the number that our unions statewide can collectively bargain towards in terms of, in terms of CPI through the contract. We went through second Friday count, and we've got in tonight's consent agenda slightly modified administrative contract language that the board will approve. In March, we'll get just an insurance update in terms of where we're at with strategy and projected costs. We will give you an update in terms of retirements that have been handed in. We will have a mass posting that we discussed, trying to get out and had early, get as many of those early hires as possible. And then we will set the, we wanna set the annual meeting date in March. So the board might remember, at our last annual meeting, we set at a date to be determined later. Pete and I are leaning towards a slightly later annual meeting date, but benchmarked as that gets by Pete. That gets us by the third Friday count, right? We're here on the same track as in November, September. Yep, so, and we'll bring that back to the board with the recommendation. We are, we're at least thinking of recommending a slightly later annual meeting date, so we have a little more data to work with in terms of exact budgets. So that will come in March. April, you'll get another budget update, a little bit more on debt and a little more detail on twenty-three, twenty-four. May, you'll have a vote on our insurance benefits. You'll have a cap session, compensation and base wage bargaining update. We'll have a brief budget update overall, and teacher contracts will be approved. In June, we will have preliminary budget discussions and any hand changes that might be coming. Questions at all on that timeline?
Do we lock benefits and insurance for two years?
We lock it in that we have the ability, I think, for the next, the next two years if we'd like to.
Oh, gotcha, thank you.
So we gave them a max cost escalator, and we're actually working behind the scenes right now to negotiate that. So we are, we're in a good position trying to get the benefits.
Gotcha, thank you.
Other questions on that timeline? There's a lot there. Nothing at all? Okay. Pete, I was wondering if you could just do a reminder on a high level, suddenly, of what we're gonna see over the state budget cycle here.
Oh, okay, yeah. Well, here's a slide we've seen, seen a few times, but what it is, it just gives a timeline of when we can expect to see budget proposals and if we're trying to do any of our long-term forecasting around the budget proposals. So now, we've already seen the DPI budget request for this year, I love that it's not listed up in here. It looks like over the last two budget bienniums, the governor has made their, or his official proposal in the month of February. So I'm assuming we're probably going to get it again. One thing we've always found out, though, is that the governor's proposal is very similar to the DPI proposal. So the one that will hold a lot more weight over trying to determine what our budget will look like for next year will be the third one, their JFC, which is our finance committee. They're the ones that get the best, are the most likely proposal to come out that we will see. However, the, the last one, the governor has his opportunity to go through and do some line item beat goes on it, and eventually he signs it. And as we can see, the last two budget biennium, it was done in July. So hopefully we'll, hopefully we'll get that done again in July.
And I think I just saw a news flash as we were coming to date that the governor's very close to at least releasing his preliminary budget. Any questions on that? Again, be okay with things not being perfectly crystal clear as we roll into summer. All right, I, I did want to have a little discussion on debt tonight. And just kind of get the board comfortable with thinking about our debt management strategy now that we do have some new revenue authority related to that operating referendum. And this is the best graphic I could come up with, that we are, as a board and as a district, we kind of have this constant balancing. On one side of this scale, salary, benefits, staffing, payment of debt, and operating expenses. On the other side, we have essentially the revenue side, and that state aid taxes and how we know rate ties into that. And it's important for the board to remember now that we have a hundred and sixty-million-dollar capital referendum on the books, now a nineteen-million-dollar operating referendum on the books, that you have lots of tools to tip this scale. And that if we didn't have either of those referendum questions, we don't have any of the tools regarding what's happening on the one ball side of that scale. We do not. And that we are continuing to try to find that balance around tax impact and what's best on the left side. And if any of those balls get bigger than the other ball, things might get out of balance, and we might not be able to manage it appropriately to keep kind of that one ball floating over on the right side of that scale. So that's kind of what I wanted to get into tonight, to just get us all more comfortable with what that might look like. So as a reminder, as we're heading into collective bargaining, this is, Pete and I shared this slide with you all a month ago, and these are just kind of big round numbers in terms of budget impact related to compensation. And we just built this out for essentially five percent. As you can see here, our current, if we, if we rolled our current staffing forward and everyone got a staff, and we worked on that compression issue, that in total is a one-point-five-million-dollar budget increase out of our base budget, a total of two-point-six percent in terms of pays. And then I have Pete just tick off one percent of it at a time, and you can see the rhythm there, that each of those go up, each of those increments go up roughly six-hundred thousand dollars every time we build in an additional percentage point of CPI on that salary line. And depending on what happens with the state budget, those have, if, if the state hung a big blue saying, all of those numbers would go against our operating number. We don't expect that, that's why we're really waiting to see what happens this summer. But if that were to happen, all the numbers would work against the operating referendum. Any questions on that at all? I want to just continue to remind the board what that looks like.
So just making sure, so the plus one, two, three, four, five percent, that would be the CPI piece that you're talking about that officially came in at eight?
Correct.
So this is clearly not even reflecting CPI?
No question.
Okay, to make sure. And then one other piece, that, this is probably just a memory thing that I'm forgetting about. In terms of co-curriculars, I feel like at one point too, we were talking about the fact that our co-curricular schedule was also really lagging. Is that still an issue? And is that something that needs to be considered also? Because I know, I mean, granted, my historical frame, it's been lagging for a very long time. So I'm curious where we are with that, not to open another can of worms, but that feels like a... But I mean, the compensation piece, right? Like, that's a big...
The time is right. I don't have the exact number, but I, I heard it's upwards of a decade that our stipended positions and our coaches haven't received their raise. So I, Joel and I are working behind the scenes on a potential proposal and what that looks like. But Jen kind of stole my thunder for a spring update. But yeah, we've fallen behind, and we now have the tools to kind of make it right. So I have Joel doing analysis of kind of Dane County and conference comparables. And, and I actually have been doing a little analysis behind the scenes, also tied to results policies. So I think we will find our student athletes are attending school more often, are more engaged, have higher GPAs, and the money we're spending to, to support our co-curriculars is very well-spent and very connected to results policies and engaging our kids. So that will be packaged up likely with the twenty-three, twenty-four budget, and we will want the board to weigh in on what that looks like.
So two things, like, so what you just said, though, how that ties into results, I think that's relevant if we're talking about putting money towards ICE tonight, if we can, something that we've been discussing as a board. We want to make sure that we're linking everything to our results policies as much as possible. How is this helping promote student outcomes? And I think that type of information is exactly where this kind of investment can help student outcomes and support our kids. The other question I had as we move forward, I think you've shown this in the past, but I know that the CPI has now been at like historic highs for two years. In the past, what is the trend with that? And I know you've had a slide in the past, so it's not something we need now, but I'd like to revisit that at some point, so we can kind of see what is the trend when you have historic highs? Is there a trough? Is there a continued trajectory up? Just to help us look, because it's not just this year, it's also what, what are we looking at next year? How are we, how are we gonna balance that?
Yeah, we can certainly get that, and we, we have shared that with board and refreshed that at an update. I, I can tell you that I even saw in, in an article posted today, one of the key people at the federal side started to come out and say, maybe it's, maybe we shouldn't be talking about a recession, that, that inflation's starting to slow, the job numbers are still really good, and maybe it won't be a huge trough, maybe it'll just level out. But there certainly have been times historically that, that a couple of years of really high inflation are followed by a couple of years of zeros or even a negative number. So we can show you some of those historical trends, and then we also keep an eye on what's happening on a monthly basis. So there's part of our state organization, John Stelmar, who's down in Kevin Marine, does this, like, as a side hustle, just because he loves it. He tries to guess what the Department of Revenue is going to post as the CPI number, and he starts a speculation even in February, because he'll be able to see the inflation numbers from January, and then he'll start to forecast it forward. So we'll keep, keep an eye on that as well. But the inflation's starting to slow a little bit, and that directly correlated to the, what happens with that CPI.
I think you get related to what Jen was saying, you know, this is showing us, you know, a five percent CPI, and I don't think anyone would argue that a teacher should be paid so much more than what they're currently being paid. But what is that number, and how do we... And what, because it is, it's gonna be, yeah, a cumulative expense. If this is something that is meant to level off, then it's not something we split the difference on. If there's a trough after this, I mean, I think those types of things are gonna be important, because we want to make sure our staff is not taking a pay cut.
For sure.
But we also have to make sure that we can continue to pay everybody in due proportion.
Yes, exactly right. It's the, it's the combination of playing, playing the long game a little bit here, that we've been given some tools that will afford this school district to be very strong financially into the future. We, I think it should also be important to our board and our unions how our compensation packages, including starting pay, compare to area school districts. And we're quite competitive, and we'll bring that information to the board. And we also have to make sure that we do, we don't put ourselves in a position where we go eight percent, every other school district is a little more conservative this year, goes three. We're way out in front of it to the point that we're in catch-up mode regarding the budget and our ability to manage debt down the end, and it's that kind of that balance. So the state budget will also be important. If we get, if we get a significant amount more aid, we get to hold on to that, that extra revenue authority a little bit longer, and will give us more tools.
So when you talked about state aid, you said you don't expect a big goose egg, but that's what we saw the past two years, right?
We didn't expect that, did we?
Right, so are we being overly optimistic, or do we expect the same thing to happen?
If you guys get a chance to read it, and I can send the link afterwards. There was a really well-run article in the Capital Times that just posted, I think yesterday or the day before. Scott Girard wrote it and had quotes from both sides of the aisle. Mike Berry dug deep into what was sitting in state budget proposals, did very nice work on historic, the historic kind of nature of, of state funding. And things are just trending at the state level, that everyone seems like they're far more open to something happening with, with our budget. Again, none of us know in this room, but we were one of, you know, twenty, twenty-five percent of school districts that passed an operating referendum in the last two-year budget cycle. There are seventy-five percent of those school districts out there that did, that are burning through Esser funds, that are battling staffing shortages, that are having CPI conversations. And it, it just doesn't seem possible that another two years of zeros could exist. I guess anything is possible, but...
And that was the surplus.
Oh my gosh.
Correct. Exactly right.
Can I just add one thought about the co-curricular too? I know you said you're doing analysis and research on that, and Joel's involved in that. I'm just thinking, does that involve how many coaches we have per student athletes? Because I know we're behind in compensation, but I also think it's important to know if we have coaches for student athletes similar to other, for example, districts.
It does, yeah. So we have, I have Joel doing coaching ratios and actually a little analysis around how many JV teams we carry compared to someone else, and coaches are...
And being a growing district and a growing high school, like, how do we stay ahead of that? Make sure we have appropriate coaching levels for the athletes that will be coming forward?
Yep, all part of... Yep, all part of the 23, 24 budget package.
Just so everybody remembers too, co-curricular doesn't just mean athletics. There's a lot of really, really important programs at all of our grade levels that staff are doing for kids that are not just...
Could you give some examples of that?
Clubs, yeah. The middle schools in particular, that's such a great powerful thing that's getting our kids connected at school. Such as after-school clubs that are often just spontaneously created by staff with whatever passion kids have kind of in the moment, so.
Yes, I don't think we're able to look at it all like art, like theater or, you know, drama and things like that.
And to your point, right, research about that really helps kids feel connected to school is all of those kind of after-school.
And quite frankly, that's what in some ways is complicated, this work. That I could bring you a package that just talks around WA Athletics and there are so many other positions that are just slight stipends that you might get $500 to run a club for the entire year. That's been $500 for a decade and you're engaging 70 kids on a weekly basis that are all in for school because of something you're doing that's a little extra set project.
I'm assuming then that those less formal clubs or more spontaneously coming in are the first things to go when money is tight, like when the compensation isn't where it would be after having been left for 10 years?
Not necessary. So I think, I mean, I think we would have deeper discussions around ways to find efficiencies in our budget. In John, in my opinion, those are like small pebbles when you can potentially find bigger rocks in a budget. We get discussions where we're likely moving back to two loops on transportation. That's going to get more costly and that's a big budget rock that eventually, who knows, would be in play down the road if we had to make budget revisions again. And it is, it's peanuts in our budget compared to, you know, even a 1% bump in CPI. And it, in many cases, is the reason that some of our kids come to school every day. Some of those super small, the, you know, fall player, the musical that are just yearbook clubs. A lot of the clubs are running at that minimum cost. Anything else on that? All right. So far, so good. Pete, I'm going to do my best to run through this, fill in the gaps if you think I'm off. I wanted to have the board continue to understand the interplay regarding the budget decisions we're about to make down the road here as we close out this budget and start to get a preliminary budget pact passed and the, and what aid means. So as a reminder, we have a state revenue limit that's set on a per-people basis every year. There are really two main buckets for us to fund that. Thanks, guys. To fund that, that is tax revenue and aid. Every additional amount of aid we get from the state of Wisconsin means that we don't need to pass that on to local property taxpayers. That's a big interplay. I want to make sure everyone understands. And the impact that our spending and new students can have on aid. So aid is really calculated by number of students we have, how property-rich we are, and how much money we spend. Those three things. And they're all kind of interchangeable and pull on each other. But I, Pete ran this, I think it's a super handy calculation. Just some kind of quick fact of math in math regarding 22, 23 aid factors. If we were to increase our spending by 1%, the amount of aid we would lose would be $160,000. As a reminder, that doesn't mean we lose revenue to run our school district. We would have to pass that on to taxpayers because the state is aiding less. If our property value increased by 1%, we would lose $600,000 in aid. So you can see our property richness has a very big impact in terms of what we end up with state aid. And there's a few things we're going to mention here in the coming slides that I wanted to make sure the board was good on. So I just wanted to walk us through a few different things that could be in play as we wrap up this year and the next regarding the management of debt. So I highlighted in the middle here on a chart that Pete put together. The, I want the board to see really the total Fund 39 levy there at the bottom. So if you can see the bottom of that middle part that I highlighted, total Fund 39. This is really the remaining money we would have in our mil rate neutral budget that we put together for 23, 24. So follow me if you can here. For 23, 24, if we were to go with a 0% increase, which will not happen, a 0% increase in terms of what happened with steps and compression. If all things state equal regarding the state budget, you can see here that we'd have taxing capacity of $16,680,000 if you guys are following that line down. Our minimum debt payment next year on Fund 39 is $10 million. Meaning, I wanted to have a conversation tonight around the fact that we will have $6 million left over that won't necessarily have to go to minimum debt payment and under this scenario would not go to salary benefits. That's the interplay. I wanted to kind of make sure the board was following regarding Fund 10 levy and what we ended up doing with debt. And you can see here, and again, this is if all things stay stable in the state budget, which they won't, that if we play this out all the way up to 5%, we would only have $3.3 million left over. That would be additional money for us to consider regarding debt management. This was as simplified as Pete and I can get this slide. There's kind of a lot of information here, but hoping the board can continue to understand those relationships.
John, super quick question. When you say minimum debt payment, I'm assuming that since these are bonds, that's the payment that we are contractually obligated to make. And then when we talk about deficents, that's money that we're putting aside presumably in escrow to pay future bond issues.
Correct.
And I'm just bringing this up because I know that when people tend to look at this, they think in terms of their mortgage, for example, where you can prepay it. And that's not necessarily the case here. We can set aside money for future bonds and that's good because that will save us money, but it's not a prepayment.
Correct. So there are, we have chunks of what's called callable debt that you can call on those bonds to make your payment. And they come in kind of little bricks of our borrowing. And we are now in deficents through, I think, 2026 because there's no more callable debt left for us to pay them. So your analysis of that is exactly right. So we already started to squirrel away money that will eventually be built into our overall debt schedule related to our Fund 39 debt. Yep, good point.
So what did we, thank you for clarifying, because I swear we've used the term prepaid debt in the past.
For sure.
Pretty callable debt.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, okay. So the same concept, okay.
Yep. It's the, yeah, it's the same concept, but I think John's point is, let's pretend we have $6 million. That money wouldn't be handed immediately over to pay down that Fund 39 debt. We would actually have to put it in an escrow account and wait until those bonds got called.
Can I just add just one thing, just real quick to make sure I understand? Because with a mortgage, you're paying it down, so you're not getting, you know, interest. Here, though, we're earning money on it by putting it in escrow.
We're doing both. Yeah. So when the debt's callable, we can prepay it because we're paying off that borrowing. And at the same time, if we have to sit on it for the next three or four years, we are bringing in escrow and earning interest. So exactly right. Both things are happening.
It's a little bit different than the mortgage scenario.
It is.
So how much do we pay like two years ago, for example, just for comparison? How much do we have left over to put in an escrow account? Is it like five times as much as that or, I'm guessing that five?
No. The 2022, 23 number, that's our current budget, was the biggest we had historically. So the $22,800,000 total Fund 39 payment was the biggest one we had since we had the high school on issuance. And then I think it was anywhere from like...
The year before was like 19.
Yeah, we had like a 16, a 19, a 20. And what happened there was the board prioritized the mil rates.
Yep.
As property values went up, if we kept mil rates steady, because we did not get more permission per pupil to spend on our school district, the only other spot to spend that tax money was prepaid debt. And it was, it was a blessing that I don't even think we want to...
Yeah, thank you.
Your turn.
I think the takeaway, at least for me, is that especially we went through and talked, you know, in, to the community about the referendum, there was a lot of questions about debt repayment. And I think there was, I just want to drive home at every chance we get, it's not just continuing to pay debt, it's continuing to prepay. We're putting more than what is owed aside, whether or not it's callable as of now or not. So we are still being, there is still an aggressive, yeah. Whether or not we want it to be as aggressive is where we have the legal room, I think. But it's still keeping that trend and trajectory in mind.
Exactly right. And we will, we are probably, you know, only a few years away from having to pull out all of our debt schedules as we continue to fill up our schools and figure out what the next, our might look like down the road. But all of the hard work that this board has done is going to put us in a really good spot to have those conversations. All right. I think we can get through this relatively briefly. Just wanted to make sure the board was aware of the fact that we have a few options related to extra money we have from that operating referendum. One option is, and we can even do this this year, instead of that $22 million debt payment, we make a minimum payment. And that would be somewhere around $11 million, leaving us $10, $11 million that we have a choice to make with even at the end of this year. One option is for us to do nothing, take a year off, make no prepayment ahead of what's happening with next year's budget. And I, I worked with Pete to kind of just to evoke on with some of these options. For the time being, we have built into the budget a Fund 10, a Fund 39 transfer, prepayment with deficents to continue to hack away at our highest interest debt down the road. But wanted to at least make the board aware that we do have options to consider as we wrap up this year and have talks about next year. So the pros of no prepayment at all, we'd increase our fund balance, we decrease or eliminate our need for short-term borrowing. We, in the short term, would increase our equalization aid because we'd be spending less per student. And we could do periodic investments to increase our revenue. I think not a ton of revenue related to that, but we'd have options to invest while we have no fund balance. Cons to that, we would have no additional interest savings kind of related to that deficents. And we wouldn't be able to decrease the number of years on our debt schedule, in particular for the building we're sitting in right now. But wanted to let the board know that that is an option and maybe something that even a version of this, that maybe we don't use every nickel for prepayment of debt. We hold some back in fund balance, so we have a little more flexibility in future budgets.
Just to clarify one thing, it says no interest savings, but if we eliminate the need for short-term borrowing, we would save on the interest we paid for short-term borrowing.
Bingo. And the legal costs related to it. Yep, very good point.
So on the previous slide, we don't have to put up a previous slide, the Fund 41. I might be completely misremembering, but that was the fund dedicated towards like replacement costs. So like maintenance, new parking lot, roof, stuff like that. That historically, again, if memory serves, was seemingly very underfunded.
Yep.
But that's an account, like that money can be an account that then earns interest for us as well, right? Similar to an escrow?
That money does not earn interest. It is amateurized over the life of us funding Fund 41. Right. The money, you're both correct on this. Because we have money set aside in its own bank account for Fund 41 that is earning interest on it. So we are getting that. What Jen is also talking about is for our equalization aid and how the equalization aid formula, instead of all the expenses coming in on that first year and, you know, lowering our amount of aid that we're going to get by enlarging them, it actually amortizes it out over the number of years we've been lugging into Fund 41. So it's a good tool that the school board will be able to use to help, to help level or minimize your aid loss.
So you can like amplify it and then monetize it out.
Right. And John, we actually made the decision to include Fund 41 tonight because it's, it is, it's one of the tools the board has on what to do with the extra taxing capacity. That in some ways, if we were making greater deposits into our capital maintenance account, and that's what that is, it lessens the need for us to go to a referendum for roughs and spoils. And some school districts do that. They, they just get by with their capital maintenance account and then every 10 years, we need rough spoilers, windows, and head to a capital operating referendum. And if we put more money into Fund 41, we'd have annual project work to keep up on our capital maintenance needs, lessening the likelihood for us to need to do a referendum like that.
And just to be clear again, because this is all coming from Fund 39 permissions or allocations, this is not a question of taking from operations money that would otherwise be in operations and prepaying or putting in Fund 41. This is just a question of allocating around capital assets.
Fund 41 is part of the revenue limit formula, as Chad had mentioned earlier. There are a few funds that are part of, part of the revenue limit formula. So if we allocate more of our tax lugging into Fund 41, that means that there's less money available to be allocated for Fund 10. So if that's, if that's what you're asking. Because it's funded by tax dollars.
Yeah.
Yep. Okay. I think we can get through the rest of these in relatively brief fashion. Fund 38, we just wanted to get the board comfortable with us, the fact that we have Fund 38, which was a borrowing we did, and I think this was during Meredith's time, for, for post-retirement benefits for the district. So to give the district a little, give the board a little bit more background, the board made a decision and the finance team that instead of riding the yo-yo every year of what was happening with retirement benefits, they made a decision to borrow, I think it was $25 million, $35 million. Pete can pull up that? 25. It's 20, the original data, I think, was $25 million. Borrow a set of money and then allow PMA to manage that money to grow some interest. And then peel off $2.5 million a year in debt payment to Fund 38 and then fund post-retirement benefits out of that lump of money. And we have options to prepay on Fund 38 if we want to. It's a, it's a lower interest debt than we have in Fund 39. But it is a potential strategy that if we paid off the Fund 38 debt of $25 million, we would free up $2.5 million every year that we're paying on OPAD debt. So that is, I wanted the board to be aware that that was just debt we owned on a manual basis. So pros would be, we would decrease the Fund 38 down the road. We would save some interest and we could decrease the number of years we have on that debt. Cons are, the outstanding debt related to the OPAD program is basically already in place with decent interest rates. Questions on Fund 38? It was $25 million, as Jen says.
And our interest rates, I would imagine are?
I think they're the twos. Uh, the Fund 38 interest rates are in the twos for the most part. Two and a quarter, two and a half, and then after about five years, it drops down to the ones, the low ones. There have been years where our investments are outpacing the interest costs, which is a really good thing.
We should, right.
Yeah, how's that, Harry? You said it's lower than other debts. So give us an example. What's the interest rates on our other debt?
We, Pete was just going through this. We have some callable debt, but we have some debt we can put into deficents that's 5%. Our, our Fund 39 debt payments this year are... Our, our Fund Thirty-Nine debt payments this year are five percent. And then for the next few years after that, for the next maybe five years, it drops to about three and a half percent. And then, like I said, actually stays about three and a half percent until it matures in twenty-three, five. So just the next year's.
So you said that there are some years where the investment activity on this Fund Thirty-Eight account outpaces the interest that we pay for it.
Yep.
So would we then be losing revenue by closing it out?
That would be a fair question.
That would be one way of thinking of it, yes. The, you have to be very into the pro idea of this that if we were, if we managed to chase Fund Thirty-Eight for a couple of years, we could close that loan out. And then we have two-point-five million dollars of Fund Ten money at our disposal to do what we wanted to do. But, and the investments go like this. So we have quarterly meetings with our financial advisors. Last year was really good. But the economy's slowing down and there's a decent chance that it doesn't look as good this upcoming year.
Chad, you said to pay for post-retirement benefits, that's in addition to the WRS or?
Yeah, so WRS is, is essentially the state-funded pension plan. We have post-retirement benefits in terms of health insurance, sick leave being paid out. Retirement, we have, I think, five different phases of retirement package. Some of our most vested staff members that have been here thirty, thirty-five years could have six figures of benefits when they retire from our school district. So those are the retirement benefits I'm talking about.
Because that district doesn't participate in the state health insurance program.
Some of it's related to health insurance. A lot of it is money's related to HRAs. So we've got a health insurance annuity that the district's been paying into and then has to cash out. So some employees, especially long-tenured employees, can have a significant benefit when they retire from our district. And that's kind of the ebbs and flows I'm talking about in terms of folks that are retiring. And the district made the decision to flatten it out with that one. All right. Fund Thirty-Eight, Fund Thirty-Nine, we've talked about it in nauseam. So I don't need to spend a ton of time there. That's our capital debt advantage is there. Main one we have, in my mind, interest savings and freeing up taxing capacity for us to grow in the future. And John kind of led us down the road of Fund Forty-One. So Fund Forty-One is the, our fund to maintain our capital assets. Will be most tied at week twelve. But this would be money that, once we levy towards it, our school district has to use it to maintain our facilities. And it has amateur, you can amateurize some of the costs to lessen aid impact in terms of your per-people costs. But I think we should continue to entertain this as a team. We have some amazing assets in this district and budgeting for them on an annual basis to maintain them is a recommendation I'll continue to make.
I think this would be, go back to that first slide of all the marbles. Because, I mean, there's a lot of levers that you have to balance and.
It's a ton.
I mean, I feel it's more like that, you know, picture with all the strings person pointing.
It is.
It's very, yeah. I appreciate you giving us the higher level that's still in-depth, but seeing just as you're talking about, there's some debt that is actually earning us money in some years. How do we manage that? Some that's decreasing while we're getting an aid.
For sure.
Not always the same.
Thank you for indulging us. I think it was our role to just continue to make sure the community and the board is as informed as possible and has tools at your disposal to ask the right questions as we close out this year's budget and make some suggestions and eventually pass a preliminary budget for next year. Any other questions on the budget update? Okay.
Very helpful.
Thank you, guys. Pete, I'll keep you up here for OE seven, just in case there's something. Dr. Clarity, you want to keep going or you want to, you want a two-minute stretch break or not? Keep it rolling?
We're rolling.
All right. Hey, Lori, I noticed one other real slight typo. Can you just refresh this quick? All right, OE seven. Dr. Clarity, do I saw the floor or do you want to intro this?
I'll give you your voice, where would you grab some water or some dry ice?
Perfect.
All right. OE seven is, excuse me, asset protection. And just a quick overview of the expectation of the superintendent is that, that I assure that all district assets are adequately protected, properly maintained, properly used, and not placed at undue risk. After an analysis of our, of this OE, we, we were in an area, we recommended an area of compliance and all except for all of the certain one area. I was able to front-load that conversation with you on Saturday during our board retreat. We'll go into a little more detail around how we want to dispose of that. Not dispose of it, how we want to address that indicator and think about how to, how to move forward. I think, given that you've had the materials in front of you since, since Thursday, I just want to do a quick overview. But the board has had an opportunity to review and may have questions based on what they've already received.
Absolutely. Okay, I'll try to, I'll try to get through this very briefly. To Dr. Clarity's point, I think, this is, this is an incredibly necessary OE. But this is very, in many cases, complacency stuff. Do we have liability insurance? Do we have insurance on this building? Are we making sure that the board and the district have all their bases covered as far as risk? So in many cases, and you will see on the hundred pages of evidence we supplied, that this is just proving to the board that we have those boxes checked. Except for one red one we want to talk about tonight. So OE seven-one, and I'm just going to breeze through these. Do we have property insurance and could I prove it to the board? And, and do we have vehicle insurance? Could we prove it to the board? Seven-two, do we have errors and omissions and comprehensive general liability insurance protecting board, staff, and district staff? And this is general liability insurance and workers' comp insurance. And we have documents proving that we're carrying that coverage. Seven-three, that the district will protect against theft and misappropriation and use of funds. And that's, a lot of that's also related to OE-six, checks and balances we have and our audit checking for it. Seven-four, we can spend a little bit more time here. This is the, our ability to protect both information and the stuff we've got. So seven-one, that we have a disaster recovery plan. We detailed that and Jason's done a ton of work on that. The board should feel good about the fact that our insurance carrier actually will not provide us cyber insurance, cowbell insurance, unless we've almost gone through our own OE with the insurance company in terms of redundancies in our system and things that we're doing to keep our type of infrastructure safe from a cyber attack. So that's a lot of the work that Jason and Angie, Angie's team have done to go through that. The district's intellectual property ownerships maintained by the district. And the last one, I think we wanted to have a little more discussion on. I'll just go into this a little bit more. That the district will maintain an inventory of all physical assets, or physical assets to safeguard against theft or other losses. So the indicator, or the evidence related to that has to do with us maintaining an asset management system. And I'll be the first one to let the board know that that was my first red check mark and we knew it was coming. But that was a system that, when this policy was adopted, did not exist. And if you follow the definitions outlined in seven-four, that physical asset would mean everything the district owns that has more than five thousand dollars in value. We would need the ability to tag it and track it the time we own it, the time we decommission it or sell it. And wanted to see if the board was interested in further discussion related to that. I, is it, is it likely best practice? Yes. Do we, as an organization, have to ask ourselves the why related to doing this critical work? We can ask if there's some other redundant systems we already have in place that doesn't necessarily check this box exactly. But if we're doing this with full fidelity, it would mean the following. We would likely have to hire a third party to come in here and work through this entire district, top to bottom. Anything we own that has a value of over five thousand dollars would get an asset tracking number, would be logged into an asset tracking system. And then if we're using the asset tracking system, anytime we're maintaining that item or anytime we're selling it or anytime we're putting in a new building, we would hit it with a little gun and we would track it like an Amazon warehouse. Everything five thousand dollars or more. Put that in perspective, what that might look like. It would also mean that anytime we purchased something new that had a value of over five thousand dollars, we would have to come up with a central warehouse of some sort that likely would have at least a person that would be receiving everything into our school district, tag it, get it in the system, and send it to the site for us to track. It would also mean we'd have to get good at the decommissioning of equipment as well. When we knew we were no longer using assets, we'd have to pull it from our inventory system. Because the second we do a district-wide update and we tag the boiler, a boiler in this building, and we get a new boiler and it gets a new tag, our system's out of whack and out of check the second we aren't updating it when we're bringing things in and taking them off.
Do we have a lot of theft of boilers? Is that?
We don't.
I was curious.
Yeah, and the, I mentioned this. So Meredith, the things that we currently would see, the, the highest risk of theft, iPads, library books. Those are things we track on individual systems right now. We have a software called Follett for, for all of our library books. And Jason and the tech team have a system to track all of our iPads. But we frankly don't have a system to track our boilers. We, you know, there's a decent chance that data projector right there is worth more than five thousand dollars. That thing does not have an asset tracking number on it. We could find it somewhere in the books that we bought it. But we don't have a system to track that asset. And we wouldn't have a system if we eventually had a new projector. And we then just decided that's something the board wants to prioritize as immediate work, or if the board's okay with that check mark for now. And we can continue to have that discussion down the road. I think some of it's tied to OE twelve. There's, I, I'm expecting our facilities team to continue to dive into this work. I want every roof membrane and section in this district inventory with age and useful life and how much it costs to replace. I want us to know how much money we're putting into a boiler. I'm not super actually interested right now in making sure that that projector has a barcode on it. And we have to decide where we want to land in terms of.
If we're coming back to the point of all of these, are to make sure that the district's running in an efficient and effective manner and doing so in a way that is promoting the results of our students.
Correct.
Does this, is checking this box, is the cost that it would take to get a system up and running going to materially promote our management of the district in a way that benefits our kids?
Right. And that, Meredith, that is the exact question. You are one hundred percent right.
Well, it benefits us financially, right? By not doing this, are we losing property?
I think it's also that question, right? Like anecdotally, I know we don't have like marked hard data. But anecdotally, are there people that are saying, oh, my gosh, we have projectors disappearing left and right? If so, we clearly need to do something about it.
Right.
But if not, maybe it's not the.
And you are saying there's some tracking of some things, just other things aren't tracked? Like, for example, vehicles. If I'd asked you, like, do we have some mechanism for?
One hundred percent.
That.
With one another.
Yeah, I think that's what it is to me. This is a really important thing, that we track our assets that are at highest risk of theft.
One hundred percent.
So the problem is, is in how we've defined it. We seem to have been too broad. We, the dollar amount was too small and we didn't clarify that it should be a movable fixer. We don't need to be concerned about theft of boilers or projectors that are bolted to the ceiling, you know, twelve feet off the ground. I mean, I think it's a problem with how we've defined it and that with the standards.
I would agree.
So if I'm hearing this correctly, we already have systems that answer this question for the smaller stuff that has legs, books, iPads, things like that.
Correct, in some cases that fall below the board's that are agreed upon definition for asset. No question, Jack. Right.
And then you're, you're working with facilities, maintenance, whatever, to develop some sort of asset management around the big-ticket items, the roofs, the things like that, vehicles, I assume would be included in that.
Yep.
This is just about a band of stuff in the middle. Technology here is one example.
And the, the examples are common. So let's say the orchestra show in the performing arts center, which is for sure, you know, has a value that's somewhere in five figures. That doesn't have an asset tag number on it. But we own it. The, the risk of theft is very low. But if we stuck to the definition that Jill mentioned, and now you, John, it's that middle band of stuff. You're exactly right.
But even some of that stuff that's maybe a little bit pricier, is that in some sort of, like, at some point, I'd imagine that your asset management planning will work down to that level where you'll know how old it is, when it needs to be replaced, this projector, how old it is, when it needs to be replaced, that sort of thing.
Yeah, and I think those, those, all of those things are kind of happening on parallel tremors. That some of our local budget owners, Jason manages a sizable tech budget and knows the age of every TV in this district, its useful life, when it needs to be refreshed. He knows the age of every iPad, how much it's going to cost to replace. And the same through, through all the equipment in the PAC. And, you know, Dawn in the PAC has an annual budget to refresh some of this stuff. But if bigger ticket items are coming up, it's my job, as someone who works closely with her, to make sure we continue to keep an eye on the budget. And if there's a blip, we find a way to fill it.
And so most of that, again, if I'm recalling correctly, is covered under OE twelve?
I would say the majority, minus the stuff on wheels, yeah. OE twelve, to me, is, we are managing, in OE twelve, if we took our school district and flipped it upside down, everything that didn't land on the ceiling, if you're imagining this, would be OE twelve. So the furniture, the laptops, all hits the ceiling. The rest of the stuff that sticks to the physical building is OE twelve.
And that's about planning for replacement, not about theft?
Without a doubt.
Right.
But it is, John, I think it can be, it can be related to, I would expect John Bremmer to know that a certain boiler is becoming a maintenance issue for us. And unless we're tracking that asset related to how much money we're putting into repairing that boiler and had that system in place, we're not doing our job. That, we've got a hundred percent replacement value of this boiler in the last five years because we keep swapping our parts.
And again, that's, that's more OE twelve.
No question.
So this here is more about, at what point are we tracking things in relation to preventing theft or, I guess, significant damage that really aren't, don't lend themselves to being tracked?
Correct.
That's not moving. It's kind of a waste of money to put a sticker on it either, like.
Well, couldn't we argue that cameras do? I mean, in some places, we have other ways of detecting theft other than barcoding the oven, right? Because there's some security staff, for example, that are employed. There's also cameras in certain areas where we would be able to.
You could even get to like security and make sure doors are locked, doors are going to help with this.
I mean, if we asked you, let's say about athletic equipment, like stuff that's out on fields when teams are. on fields when teams are practicing, I mean, theoretically, could that be lost? Or is that the department like keeping track of, you know?
Blocking sled? Right. Yeah.
I mean, I think we can, we could define this and narrow it and call it things that are only movable, and we can define movable in a way that really narrows it to things that are at the highest risk for theft. Because I mean, I do think that if you have something that could easily be put in a pocket that maybe is worth five thousand dollars, you might want to have some sort of tracking in place to know that it's not, it hasn't been lost.
Correct.
So I think we can narrow...
So, I agree with Joe. What is the, what is the problem? Do you, do you have a different indicator that you would propose? Or do you want to, did you just want to see where the board was at? Because I think we're saying, we want this to be reasonable. I mean, what makes the most sense, so we're still being responsible, but yet if it's not likely to be stolen, let's...
Yeah, and I think this, Dr. Clarity and I were hopeful that we would have this level of discussion around this. Dr. Clarity, I don't know if you want to kind of step in on what you're thinking, potential process might be?
So, what I would, the process was, now that, as I'm hearing the board, identify a indicator that seems to be problematic, or does that reach the intent, they refer as a discussion we had on Saturday, a recommendation from the board to put this back into the purview of the administrative team to come up with a new indicator and pass that back to the board, but we just need more for that to happen. Indicator and definition.
Yeah, yeah, the definition is linked only to that indicator, so.
John, just add another question. You said a firm would have to be hired, come in to do their inventory. Do we have an estimate of how much a firm would...
I could, yeah, I could get you one. I think it would be important for us to understand the scope of the work. So there are, you know, we use a software package called SchoolDude, believe it or not. Picture like three guys in a basement, that's like the software package, now it's a billion-dollar company. But we do have, we've got SchoolDude as our facility management platform, and they have a section of SchoolDude is for the assets related to facilities maintenance. And they will charge you on a square foot basis to go through your school district and have you, have them itemize the stuff that you're maintaining, so you can track that asset. And some of the stuff that we might want to do, at least on the building facility side, might be worth far less than five thousand dollars. The board doesn't need to necessarily know we're doing it, but I might want to know, I might want to know the filters we're replacing in the building. And we might have a certain area of the building that has an asset tag with a QR code that every time a filter's swapped out, that area in the unit gets hit with a QR code, so we're more, we're changing filters, as an example. So there's, that might be one avenue we can go. There's also, you know, our, our software package, Skyward, has an asset management tag, and there are companies that will come and inventory your entire district. And that will probably be done on a square foot basis, or they'll bill you with time and give you estimated dollars. But it would be for sure six figures in cost for us to bring a team to do it, no doubt. Any other questions on seven four?
No, we'll kind of put that off to the side, and we can take a...
Yeah, I was thinking, Dr. Clarity, I was just taking a note on that, and we'll get after that.
Once we, once we have documentation of the work involved, then we will, and then timeline, but I think one thing we did not do well with the timeline, when you want to see indicators brought back again, is it at the next, is it at the next rotation? Is it too far out, or...
Well, I mean, I think, I think for you to be doing, you know, effective monitoring and kind of know what the OE, what the indicators are, I think we would be, again, asking for, what's a reasonable timeline to have an indicator brought back? I think, I don't know that this is one, I mean, if it was a, this isn't one where I think we're all like waiting with our breath held about how will this resolve?
Yeah, a few weeks, I don't think we're much...
Well, we'll shoot for a March, maybe the last May of March.
Okay. So we'll take a, after we kind of vote on the official OE, then we'll do a vote on whether or not to send the indicator back, just so we have the process kind of in place.
Then it would be indicator and definition.
Definition. I guess I'm linking those together just automatically without having to call them out, because if the indicator's changed and the definition only applies to that indicator, then it just kind of is all a piece.
Perfect.
Then it can...
Seven five is related to facilities maintenance. So really two things. Do we have some automated systems in place to make sure we get useful life and efficient use out of our systems? And we do, and we've given you screenshots of all the stuff we're running behind the scenes, that, there are motion sensors in here that will kick down the temperature tonight the second we leave this room and there's no longer activity. And do we have a maintenance program and a maintenance equipment program that is SchoolDude, where we're taking tickets and also maintaining our facilities with kind of the required preventative maintenance, filter changes, are any of that? Seven six, the superintendent may not have recklessly exposed the district, and that one I think was pretty straightforward. Seven seven, we can invest funds that aren't secured, and I think that one again is fairly straightforward. Seven eight, we may not purchase or sell real estate, and so the board, we have to actually hold a public meeting to do that in this district, so, and it's actually, I think it's embedded in, no, it's automatically embedded in OE six, you guys would have to approve it over two hundred fifty thousand dollars anyhow, and I think this is another fatal save. So we did not buy any property over the last year, and the board would have their hands on that if that were to occur. Seven nine is related to the district's public image and credibility, and we used some survey results there, and I know Dr. Clarity had, at least some initial questions around if we had that in the right spot, but I think at least for the time we were comfortable with the survey data related to positive image that we included in that. Dr. Clarity, that's what I've got for OE seven.
Thank you, Jen. This time I'll turn over to the board education to process OE seven.
Sounds good. Any questions for Jen Peetman over here from the board?
I did have one. I also thought OE seven point nine was weirdly placed. I was like, we put this here, it's a string. Like, you're not asking, or are you asking the board to move it out into a different spot, or you really are cool with it where it is, and we can move it if it makes sense?
We have not made that request. There is a very similar one in OE nine three. OE nine three is almost eerily similar.
So maybe when that comes to the board, we could discuss it that time.
We did OE nine at that moment.
Yeah, I remember.
Yeah.
I also have, as I was reading this, I was like, how did I not make this comment when we were approving these indicators? Maintains a positive image. What level of percentage response rate is a positive image? Is it anything over fifty percent?
Well, and are those survey questions directly asked me about? I mean, right, it was like that little bit of, and I'm not to say that about the evidence, but like, right, this is such a subjective squishy type of thing to provide evidence for? And what does that actually look like in a survey? What direct question would get to that, which would be sort of absurd? So, yeah, so that just feels, you know, interesting.
I like that we look at our image as an asset, like a legacy.
Yeah.
It is goodwill, reputational...
It is, it is, great.
It's just an interesting spot.
Okay, so it sounds like no immediate, our leadership doesn't want immediate action on that.
So just procedurally, I can't meet their mission anymore because of the boards' review right now. So if the board says it's in the wrong spot, then we could...
It's just something that I imagine we would review during some sort of audit of our policies, which is not now.
Yeah, well, I think it would depend, do we want to, because it is, is a policy as opposed to just an indicator. I think we said, and if you're comfortable with it being there and it's just awkward...
We spent, we spent like hours like chasing, like looking at all around other growers models to see, like, did we type over this? But it's in, yeah, I'd add public image as a asset.
I think you put it well. We do learn public perception as an asset.
Well, I mean, the board, I think, are we good with questions as far as everything but this weird indicator?
Yes.
And then we can, yeah, dispose from it. Okay, so, thank you. Appreciate the time, you spend a lot of time going through some really important information. And again, the work that you put in helping us understand the budget on an ongoing basis tells us all these things, I feel like the understanding is much more robust than I could have in the past. So with that, is there a motion from the board to accept and approve the indicators as presented with the exception of...
We have a composite report? Here.
Yeah, we need to bring it, right? Go to the office.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, and then, so I have a motion from John, is there a second? There is a second from Nicole. No, don't, don't, don't.
Don't vote.
I'm so wanting to ask to just vote on it. Okay, but there is, I do wonder, is there much discussion to be had on anything other than the indicators that are in question that we raised or...
Oh.
No? Yes?
I don't, I just, I want to, if it's okay, can I go with seven point nine for a second?
Yeah, absolutely.
So the policy itself, I found to be confusing with the interpretation that directly ties it to the superintendent demonstrating sound resource management, keeping the district in financial condition, in a financial condition, and behaviors of the superintendent that are legally ethical, that are again aligned to financial management. I do see that as keeping it, so if it's in that lane, then it belongs, then it stays right here. If it's the overall public image, then I, OE nine is where it belongs.
So you're saying you saved our, and they used policy by giving it an interpretation that tied it back to...
I would never give myself the credit.
I'm having that down.
So if that's the case, because I, then we would be talking about potentially sending back that indicator again to administration to review, does that indicator measure for going forward?
Can we vote on accepting the report?
Yeah.
And then we'll open a discussion on the reasonableness of the indicators and that going forward.
Thanks, John.
Going forward.
Thank you.
In process.
I know, I'm, all right, is there a, we have a motion, we have a second. All in favor of approving the monitoring report as presented, signify with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No, it has unanimously been approved. Okay, with that, I mean, let's dispose of seven point four first. Is there a motion to refer the indicator seven, or seven point four, indicator three, and the definition back to administration for revision? Thank you.
We're including the definition as part of the interpretations.
Yeah. We are talking about seven point four, so the indicator three has a related definition. So it would just be for indicator three. So, thank you. A motion from Jen, is there a second?
So, sorry, on the printed papers, it's indicator three. On the slides, there's an indicator four.
Right, it's, it's, it's all one, it's four.
Okay.
That's a correction, I mean, so it was right on the PowerPoint.
Ah.
That was the type of...
Oh, yes.
We got it. Okay, so it's indicator, it's indicator four?
Four.
Thank you, I want to make sure I'm, okay, so indicator seven point four, indicator four.
Yes.
Refer that back to administration for revision. Jen?
Yes.
Does your motion stand?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Nicole, all in favor, signify with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so now we are back to our last one of seven point nine. Board, what would you, well, do we have a recommendation? Do you have any, any recommendation that you'd like the board to consider?
For seven point nine?
As far as action, leaving it, revising it, removing it?
Seven point nine with the current interpretation, if we go by the interpretation, it's fine. My recommendation is that we address the indicator one that uses the community survey responses in alignment. It should actually be, for example, evidence about sound financial planning that goes there as evidence, not the community survey.
So my, so my understanding is that it would be referring back to administration, indicator one for revision, is that...
Can we put it on our list? I agree with Dr. Clarity, I think this team has done a fantastic job in making it make sense, like, make it make sense, they've done that. It would be great if we could add to the end of our policy some sort of wording for the future, you know, that any action that damages the district's public image or credibility as it relates to fiscal responsibility, or something to that level to like ground it. So I think, I'm okay also putting the onus back on us to be like, this policy wording doesn't make sense?
Well, and I just want to put it out there for discussion whether this OE adds value at all.
Right.
Because if it doesn't, we're just creating work for the administration just for the sake of we have this here. And it sure seems to me that we've got that financial reputation covered by all the rest of the OEs. We've got the public image covered by, you know, separate OEs. Is this something that's...
Public image covered.
So there's a...
Forty-nine.
Communication is covered there.
It doesn't actually, so to John's point, it doesn't totally get it, the, the indicators don't totally get at that point.
I'm sorry, just before we move too far away, I am content with sending the indicators back on recommendation for revisions, whatever. I think that Dr. Clarity is right, this interpretation does a lot of good clarifying work here. With that being said, I am very hesitant to take on any policy-based work out of some sort of schedule for when these things would be audited. This policy was just inaugurated not that long ago. I think with the indicators, we found a hiccup, but I think we need to give it more time before we can say with certainty that it is superfluous or doesn't belong in some way. But I think that's why we don't open the policies up, really, no.
Thanks, John. I would, I would think that is actually kind of captures some of the discussion that we had about maybe having a place where we go back at, looking at policies all in one piece at a certain time, so we're not accidentally, maybe we created this kind of at a last, maybe this wasn't the best revision process. Is this the best revision process? Maybe a more thoughtful process.
I think seeing this OE with different indicators might lead to a different discussion. And I'd like to give it time, that's why we don't review this.
Are you making a motion?
I would move to remand this back under reasonableness standard for revision for indicator one, and I didn't hear a recommendation for two. So just indicator one and any associated interpretations that go with that? Or I like the interpretations here?
Okay, we have a motion, we have a motion from John, is a second, a second from Christina? Okay, all in favor of remanding this one back, indicator one, signify with aye.
Aye.
Let's do a hand count. Aye? One, two, three. Oh, good. Any opposed? Okay, we have, Nicole dissenting, we have the rest of the board affirming, so this will also be sent back for revision, indicator one and seven point nine. And then the re-monitoring date will be, you want two months?
We can do, we can do both of these by end of March.
You sure?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Okay, that's good, sounds good. All right, thank you, boys.
I just want to do a nose check, or do we get both of these, seven, seven point nine point one and seven point four point four?
John, you want it on process? Right, it's a lot of work. Okay, thanks everyone, so with that, we can move... Okay, thanks everyone. So with that, we can move on from our OEs and we.
Dr. Clarity, I'm sorry, I want to be sure we get this right. The 7.4.3, what we said in our current monitoring report, it was wrong, was on PowerPoint.
Okay, so it was, okay, 7.4.3.
So you had it right today.
You were right.
Thank you.
Sorry, can we, do we agree?
When you reference 7.3.3 today in cabinet, 7.4, 7.4.3 in cabinet, 7.4.4 on the PowerPoint, was incorrect.
So for clarity, we're gonna just.
The non-trip report is correct.
The vote for rescinding back, we're gonna send back 7.4.3 back to administration for revision. Jen, does your motion stand?
Stand.
Does your second stand, Nicole? And then again, all in favor, signify with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass with the same vote. Okay, so 7.4.3. Okay, so thank you very much. And then end of March, we'll have a review. Thank you again. I don't think these are extremely pressing, but we don't want to lose track of them, so if you need additional time, let us know, but otherwise that's.
I didn't have much on here, but I'm just gonna break this.
March 20th, we have March 20th. We can do April 3rd, and I think there's two full months, and I think that makes, you know, let's do April 3rd as the re-monitoring date that makes sense.
Yes.
Or can we catch that, do on April 3rd please? So I need if they, if there's a date to the, it's a board meeting?
Yeah.
So I, you know, need it to the board the Thursday before that.
Okay, thank you. All right, I appreciate it. Okay, so board, on the, on our agenda, we have a place for board updates, and I noticed that we had, you know, last time, I think, I missed it, but I know that you.
Wasby and Joe had Wasby update, and you know, I think there needs to be a place. John, you do a great job of hearing us, like there's the CISA updates. I want to make sure that we have a place on the calendar. VAEF updates would be great. We have IDAC, you know, meeting. Anything that there's board liaison work, you know, Nicole, you've got a motion coming up.
It's true. And you had a whole lot of stuff going on with candidates, you know, that were coming in, so a place where you can give, this is just kind of a standing agenda item, but I want keep an eye, if you have things that you need to, you know, that you're doing on behalf of the board, the board can let you know about it because that's a lot of the time spent outside of board meeting hours, and so here's a place that we can talk about that. Is there anybody who has any updates, CISA two, VAEF, anything that we can hit tonight? Board?
I would just, a general statement to remind every candidate to get your continuing finance. I don't have the numbers of the due dev forms in front of me. CF one? I don't know if I thought of this. Okay, so your CF one, any campaign statement forms. Please just check your packets again. Check your packets, people.
I can give a brief VAEF update. So recently, VAEF went around and presented mock checks to some of the staff members that applied for and received a grant, so I had the pleasure of being involved in two of those. Teachers classroom group went in and got two. Actually, three, yeah, anyway. So there were a number of days where different people on the VAEF board were able to go and visit staff and get a presentation and take a photo. So if you were on social media and may have seen some of those pictures, if not, go to the VAEF page and you can see staff and their students and various different board members presenting.
Can you give an example of the type of things that are funded by VAEF? Because it's really a fun foundation.
Yes, so I can give you the ones I was involved in. Okay, so there was one New Century teacher who had applied for wiggle stools, so they were these imagine like a little post around top, and the kids actually took a picture, if you want to look online, it took a picture of the kids like sitting on them, and it was basically alternative seating for elementary school students, helpful with students who maybe don't really like sitting in traditional chair for long periods of time, gives them a little more, you know, ability to move.
It's great for sensory issues.
Yeah, we took a nice photo of kids, and you can actually see it online, of kids like sitting there. We also were at a middle school, we were at Badger Ridge, presenting to a math teacher who had applied for whiteboards for problem solving, so students could demonstrate their work. We were in the classroom answering those questions. There were some that I didn't participate in, like there was a high school, couple of presentations there. So yeah, go online and you'll see the photos of different staff. I think it's just fun to be able to celebrate what staff requested and then be able to see students impacted by their grant requests.
We see some kind of innovation going on in classrooms, and can you just kind of let the board know where do the funds come from that they're getting this credit for?
Where's they get the VAEF funds? Okay, well, people donate, people kind of make donations to VAEF. During teacher appreciation meeting other times of year, oftentimes they'll ask, do more of a request, but any time of year, really, people can donate to VAEF. They also do a craft sale in the fall, and I know right now, like I pitched for this, the person who was coordinating that annual event, which is in November, cannot coordinate from this point forward due to job issues, jobs to live in, so we are looking for another community volunteer to coordinate that craft sale. Have you ever been to that craft sale? It's typically at like the Badger Ridge or Shepherd Creek building, is that true?
Shepherd Creek.
Yeah, and it's like a large November Saturday event where people make, it's only people who actually make the products themselves, artisans, have booths, and you can come and do some pretty holiday season shopping and.
So they have different kinds of activities like Badger Ridge. We always had, we had a board liaison to VAEF at least since I've been on the board, and it was one that I think when I first heard that I was on the board, I was able to be part of it. It is a great a great opportunity, so something just to kind of keep in mind. It's, they do, it's like, all feel good, it's all positive.
Also really good for community volunteers, someone's looking for a way to help the district. I know they could always use more, they could use more help, not just for the craft fair, but other people will probably be helping. Banners will be coming up, they're also responsible for the banners that go up in conjunction with City of Corona on the light posts, and those are featuring student artwork. So I would encourage any member of the community who might be interested in more information about VAEF, go ahead and get online and look up Corona Year in Education Foundation, and certainly they can be helpful.
They do, they do a lot of really great work that goes directly to help our kids. So thank you for being out there, thank you for the information for everyone here. So, any other updates?
CISA two meets next time, I'll update next time.
Okay, well, we'll have it standing.
There we go.
There we go. Okay, with that, let's move to, we have our superintendent consent agenda, because everyone had a chance to take a look at the items under consent agenda. Are there any questions, concerns? Hearing none, the consent agenda has been approved as presented. Next, we have the board consent agenda. We have our items under there. John, go ahead.
I just wanted to clarify some comments earlier.
Yes.
Around the ice donation. I think it's wonderful that we're able to help there for our boys hockey team. I think we do have a very successful team. I think, you know, this community is a very successful tradition of not just boys hockey, but women's hockey. There have been women Olympians that have come from this community, there have been speed skating Olympians that have come from this community, and so getting extra ice time to pursue those activities is really important. My feeling is that, is that this is a tremendous thing, but I wish we could do more to support the boys hockey, and I would expect that we would continue to try to do more to support girls' sports, whether it's hockey, including some speed skating. I know we have figure skaters in this community that work very hard with very odd ice times, and so being able to support that as well will be something I will look forward to in the future.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments about the board's consent agenda? Again, we have this in the consent agenda because it's coming from an admin recommendation, and I think we've had a lot of opportunity to have questions asked and answered leading up to this. Are there any other questions about the consent agenda? Hearing none, the consent agenda is approved as presented. All right, we have our future agenda items. We are next meeting February 20th. Again, we have a slight tweak, we'll be meeting at 5:30 on the 20th. After that.
There was another superintendent consent agenda.
Yeah. Yeah, oh, should we start to go back? Oh, it's a. We are going to reverse course. Thank you for. We're going to go back to superintendent consent agenda.
So, and it was approved?
It was approved, yes.
Now we can, Rochelle and I are making eye contact, we need a principal. So venue of Board of Education, with that vote, that formally brings Mr. Brian Cox as the new principal for Brunner High School, so congratulations to our high school, the board, and our community for what Brian's going to bring to our, to our organization, a phenomenal leader, and we are very, very blessed to have him. Thank you, thank you for your support.
Jen and I were able to briefly meet him by video at our last leadership meeting, and really excited for the rest of the board to get a chance to, to meet him, and I think our school's going to be in excellent hands, so we're very excited.
His onboarding begins live on the 13th, next Monday.
Of February?
Yes, and he will be here for the full, for the full week, participating in multiple groups here at the, at the high school, in the community, as well as attending multiple events for co-creatory and extracurricular.
So you would let us know parts of that schedule, potentially?
Dr. Cox, can you send the schedule to the board, please?
Absolutely. If there's anything that would be particularly appropriate for, you know, the board to attend, you know, highlight that, so we're not just popping in everywhere, all over the district.
Is he gonna be, is that just an onboarding week and then he won't be here until a certain point, or will he?
It's part of his intermittent back and forth between Wyoming and Wisconsin.
Because he still has a job there.
Yes.
Fine.
He's still, he's still on the contract.
He still lives there, okay, fine. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, glad you jumped in on that one because, okay, so we have superintendent consent agenda passed, board consent agenda is approved, we're looking at future agenda items. We'll hear some some dates where maybe we can have some interaction with, with our new HHS principal next week, but we have our board meeting on the 20th, again at 5:30, then March 6th, and then March 27th, keeping in mind spring break, kind of made it for a wonky week, and then April 3rd, right before April 4th election, so. So exciting times coming up. Okay, so with that, is there a motion to adjourn?
So.
A motion from Nicole, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Jen, all in favor, signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. We are officially adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.